That's what she came for me.
This is one of the shirts from Starstrut for our Tomato Festival that you'll be able to purchase there. So we'll have a few other ones here. The staff shirts are almost as cool. I'm glad you're lighting them. Oh, yeah. How are you doing this year? Not pretty quick, I think, so. That's why I was off last week.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the Reynoldsburg City Council meeting of July 26, 2021, and the time is currently 6:31. I am Council President Angie Jenkins. Welcome to Reynoldsburg City Council meeting this evening. At this time, we'll have the invocation. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance that will follow. Councilmember Baker will lead us in the invocation.
Well, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that we're all able to wake up this morning because some people were not able to wake up this morning. So we treasure and thank you for that gift and also pray for all those who have been strife with COVID-19, Father God, and that we pray and that you heal them from their sickness. And also, we pray that tonight we make the choices that are best for our residents and best for our neighbors as we convene tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's true, the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Savladi?
Here.
Councilmember Packerel?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson Road?
Here.
Councilmember Cottner?
Here.
Councilmember Baker? Councilmember Bryant? Councilmember Strickland?
Present.
And President Jenkins?
Here.
We'll have the approval of the agenda. There is a change to tonight's agenda. The presentation by James Weaver, Controller of Local Waste Services, will be moved from the Transportation and Service Committee meeting to the Community Comments. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Saying none, the agenda stands as amended. Next, we'll have the approval of minutes. Approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes of July 12, 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Saying none, the minutes stand approved as submitted. Next, we'll have our Community Comments. The Community Comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for citizens to address council. Citizens may wish to bring matters to the attention of City Council or discuss items on the agenda, with the exception of legislation scheduled for a public hearing. Comments related to a public hearing may be only made during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Before addressing City Council, members of the public are asked to complete a speaker's form and give it to the Clerk of Council. The Council President will invite speakers to step to the microphone and give their name and address. All remarks should be addressed to council as a whole and not exceed three minutes. There is a presentation this evening, given by Mary Ellen O'Shaughnessy, our Franklin County Clerk of Courts, regarding vehicle registration. Welcome, Clerk O'Shaughnessy.
Thank you so much, councilmembers, for this opportunity to talk a little bit about what I do. It became very apparent when I first took this seat in 2009 that a lot of people don't know. County government is really a hidden layer of government. People really don't know what we do down there at 373 South High Street. So we took it upon ourselves, Nick and I, Nick Tool, who's here with me, to make sure we get out to community groups and talk about what the clerk does and what the clerk doesn't do. And actually, you gave me a perfect opportunity because I don't do registrations. Did you know that? I don't do registrations. I get calls all the time. Would you please do something about the BMV? I'm not the BMV. The state's the BMV. But what I do do is auto titles. That's half of my work. The other half is documents for court proceedings. And those are the two main things that we do. I've got 200 deputy clerks in nine or 10 different locations, depending on how you count, throughout the county. Now, let's go back to that titling business. Why does the clerk title your car? Well, you know, in the olden days, back, Lucas Sullivan, the founder of Franklinton and actually Central Ohio, was the first clerk. And back in the olden days, we, most people were illiterate. And they needed someone to make sure that they had the proper court documents to proceed with a court case and the proper document to document a very important and expensive piece of machinery, which today, of course, is a car. So that's why we do what we do. And like I said, I've got 200 employees in offices throughout the county. Most of the ones, of course, with court are stationed with the court to make sure those things happen. There's a bright line in Ohio between what the clerk does and what the court does. And when I first ran for this in 2008, I said, why doesn't the court just appoint the clerk? And the attorney said, well, Mary Ellen, a lot of people think maybe it should be that way. But I can tell you that especially in smaller counties where you don't have 32 judges like we do, you may have a court case and you may know the guy sitting there as a judge might be your neighbor and you might think he might have a bias. So we want to make sure that there's not even the appearance of any judicial bias when it comes to setting the docket. In other words, who's taking care of the case and managing the documents. So that's what we do. We have about 5 million hits a year on our website. We are the largest by far in the state when it comes to the Clerk of Court's office. And yes, we do titles. We are not the BMV. Please, if you have any issues about this, call me or Nick. And Nick, did you hand out your card? Did you hand out my card? Please, yes, to make sure that you see us as a resource when it comes to these things. Now, why should you title your car in Franklin County? Well, a significant portion of that $15 comes back to the county that processes the title. A significant portion. Franklin County is the major contributor to human services in Franklin County. So when you title your car in Franklin County, you're helping make Franklin County strong to continue to provide these essential human services to the people that we serve. And Central Ohio and Franklin County is a major contributor to the health, safety, and welfare of many people who need help. So I am proud to say that because we've worked hard to make sure people title in Franklin County, and I did talk to Mayor Begany about this, I don't know, two years ago now, we've been able to give $10 million back to the county commissioners to help them balance their budget to continue to provide those essential human services that the county provides. We have case information online. That's something that we did when I first took office in 2009. You can check out, if you want to do a little background check on somebody, you can put their name in my case information online and see if there's any outstanding court cases. And that's been very important for a lot of people. And as a matter of fact, that contributes a lot to our 5 million hits on our website every year. We're updating our case management system. We went electronic. We were the most comprehensive electronic court case filing system this side of the Mississippi when we did it. But we're busy continuing to improve that by making sure that we are updating our case management system. So the most important thing I can tell you is that if you have any questions about what we do, please feel free to check my website at clerk.franklincountyohio.gov. You can always call us, 614-525-3600. And we want to be a resource for you and for everybody in Franklin County. Even if we don't do the service that you're asking about, we can connect you with the county governmental service that does that. So I'm Mary Ellen O'Shaughnessy. Yes, I do give a damn. And I'm your Franklin County Clerk of Courts. Nick, did I leave anything out?
I got to note that I passed around our 2021 annual report. Please take a look at it. And again, we appreciate any feedback and we always want to be a resource to.
Nick is telling everybody we want to be a resource for you, and that's the thing. So thanks so much for the opportunity. Very much appreciate it. And keep Reynoldsburg strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly, do we have any comments from the community?
No, we have another presentation.
Okay. Is that with James Weaver?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There's also a presentation this evening with James Weaver, Controller of Local Waste Services.
Madam President, members of council, I'll introduce James here in a second. Obviously, we brought Local Waste in tonight to talk about the trash contract. I know at the last meeting, we had our first reading. We were talking about a three-year contract moving from Rumkey, who's our current provider, to Local Waste. And basically, James will answer most of the questions logistically, talk about their company. We had a nice sit-down meeting with them last week to go over, meet their staff. They met our staff, in particular, the people that are on the front end when we have complaints or when we're dealing with billing issues. Really productive meeting, really interesting. Learned lots of great things about the company. And I'm sure James will share some of that with you tonight. So I'll let James take over.
All right. Thank you all for having me. It's nice to be here, Mayor. Appreciate it. And we had a great meeting last week. So I am James Weaver from Local Waste Services. I handle all the municipal contracts as well as the Controller there as well. Just a little bit about our company. We are privately owned. The owner of our company was born and raised in Carroll, Ohio, and was an executive at the local waste management branch here for a number of years, and then spun off and created his own trash company in 1999. Now, we have, once we get all of our vehicles that we have on order for this contract, we'll have 100 pieces of equipment and about 200 employees. So we're growing a lot. We pick up a lot of other communities in the area. And we're super excited to have Reynoldsburg as part of our group now. We can't wait to share with you guys some of the different features that we discussed last week as far as the technology and things like that that we have in all of our vehicles and some of the different things we have that I think the community's going to really enjoy. All the vehicles that we have on order for this contract are CNG-powered. Now, we can't guarantee that all the vehicles in the city will be CNG. But as we continue to grow our CNG fleet, you know, you can have less emissions in the city. And that's a really big deal for a lot of places, and it's a big deal for us. And that's why every vehicle, or every year, we add to our fleet of CNG vehicles. We have a CNG filling station on our site. All of our trucks have, as well, have a tablet in our truck where we're able to complete stops right there. And that communicates back with our customer service department. So if we pick up Ms. Jenkins' home, we'll hit the complete button. And then if you call in with any concern or anything like that, our customer service staff sees the timestamp from that service. They can say, oh, well, it looks like we picked up your stop at 11:54. You know, and if someone says, hey, I took my trash out late, we've got that same kind of communication where, oh, our guy marked that skipped for not being out at 11:54. Well, I put it out at 2:00. Okay, well, that's no big deal. Those kinds of things are really important for us. Other things we have, we have five cameras in all of our trucks now. There's a cab-facing camera. There's a forward-facing camera, one on each side and one in the back. What we use those for is to not only verify our level of service, but also to create what we call a culture of safety. And our drivers know that we are watching all the time. We have a full-time employee that's always watching how they're performing, what they're doing. And we have notifications set up so if there's any distracted driving, hard stops, rolling stops, things like that, we're able to get notified immediately for those. And that's just one of the other features that we have that's really, we believe, sets us apart from the rest of competition. And we are one of the smaller haulers in the area, but we are the second-largest residential hauler. We pick up Upper Arlington, Grove City, Worthington, Hilliard, and a number of other communities in the area. That was what I've got so far. Is there any questions from anybody?
What is the projection as far as the timeline for starting the switch from the old pickup to the new?
We're already in process of that. I was able to get a great list of the customers in the area from the water department, and they were super helpful with that. And after reviewing all the different street names and everything, I've got that in a sequence now for our team to drive through the community and start to route things. And what we'll do is we'll create one giant route and one sequence number. And then we'll work with the community to decide where we can divide that to make it make sense with different barriers. So if there's like a, maybe like Main Street hypothetically, we'd be able to pick up the north side on one day and then the south side on another, or east to west, I think is what we had talked about in the meeting. But we'll be able to make that cut. And then once we have that information, we'll create a welcome packet. And that welcome packet will be presented to William. And he can get the, go through the proper steps on that to get that approved. And then we'll send that information out to the residents. It'll have details on the types of things that are able to be thrown away, the types of things that aren't able to be, when that particular individual will be collected. And all of the materials will be collected on one day. There won't be a separate day for yard waste. So trash, recycling, and yard waste, if your day is Tuesday, will always be on Tuesday, all three of those systems. And we'll have information on there regarding cart delivery, regarding anything else that's needed as far as if someone wants a smaller cart, maybe they don't want the full-size container. They want a smaller one, it's no big deal. We can handle that on a case-by-case basis, but the default will be a 95 gallon.
Our goal is, obviously, the contract would commence at the beginning of the year. Obviously, with the holiday, we assume Rumkey will go through the city, start picking things up mid, late December if anyone's renting the can from them. Local Waste will start deploying their toders probably around the same time for the solid waste as well. One thing that I think James should mention too is, whereas, you know, the past year's been challenging with COVID, you know, every company's experienced, I just went to Wendy's, I couldn't walk in because the doors were locked because, you know, not enough staff. So one thing we found very interesting with Local Waste is, as we talked about, you know, the city, the only major change in this contract is we're going to be doing half the city on Wednesday and the other half on Thursday. Everything else is status quo. Your bulk's unlimited, your recycling goes in the cart. But it all gets picked up. If you have extra, you place it next to the cart and it'll get picked up as well. Nothing changes. But the nice thing about it is they route all their trucks. So if you're on Wednesday, your trash will be picked up almost the exact same time every Wednesday morning. Whereas unfortunately now with the carriers and what we've been experiencing is they're bringing in drivers from another city. They're just kind of starting wherever they see trash and going through the city. There's real no rhyme or reason to it, which has been very frustrating on our end and in yours as well, I'm sure. So we thought that was great, you know, when their drivers come in, they know what route. Everything's computerized, so they're going to go right to that first stop and start working their way around. So we'll know. And the really nice thing was, like he mentioned, is every stop, no matter if there's trash there or not, they check it on their tablet and instantaneously that goes back to their department. So even if they pick it up, they put completed. If it wasn't out, they'll put wasn't out or the reason for it. So we have all that data in this really, you know, complex spreadsheet that they keep, which is great for us as well. So it doesn't mean that we're not going to go back and still service someone if something happened. We typically will do that. If it's a chronic thing where it happens over and over, obviously, we'll talk to the resident, explain to them, you know, they're typically out, you know, 10 o'clock. Our ordinance does say it's supposed to be out, you know, that morning. So we don't have this. But that's something too that we found was very, you know, interesting and great that we think that they'll offer the community.
Just to follow up on that, we do recommend or ask that everyone have their trash out by 7:00 a.m. And if we have a truck that maybe goes down, then we might have a help truck hop on that route and work it as well. But he is right. We do have, every dwelling in the city will be gridded so that if there's a vacant home and it sets trash out, we're able to do the appropriate things and follow up accordingly with that one. If there's bulk material, we can take a picture of that, and that's on the customer's account. They call in upset, oh, well, look at the picture on the account. We can tell exactly what's going on with that account.
Yes, hello. I do have a question. What is the amount per household for this service? How much would it cost?
Our bid was $20.47 per month. And that includes the trash container that we are providing as well. That was the one difference with the alternate bid that we provided.
And also, is there a senior discount for our seniors?
I believe there's a 10% senior discount in this contract, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
And that, in comparison, the other bid was for, for the first three years, it was $22.31 with no container. And then the option years were 2309 and 2390, respectively.
Director Dorman, how will the residents be notified to leave out their Rumkey trash cans?
So Rumkey will, if they're renting it, they rent that directly through Rumkey, so they're paying Rumkey. Rumkey will send them out something explaining how that procedure will go. I don't know how many people, I mean, I drive through, I see a few. Some people actually own them. You can buy them directly from them as well, and those will not get picked up. But Rumkey will communicate that with them. For instance, as James mentioned, Local Waste owns these carts. So if there's an issue with the carts, they're the ones that are going to go out and fix them, replace them, which is better for us. It takes that off us, which is great. And they know this. This is their business. They know what they're doing. But as far as any kind of Rumkey communication, we're going to meet with them to just kind of go over that handoff as well. Probably not this week, but next week. But same thing, yeah, there's just kind of that transition. That one week will be kind of both people in the area just dropping things off. But theirs is just on the back of a trailer, and they just kind of go one by one. Once again, they do it based on their grid, so they'll do it systematically and drop them off. Now, the one thing to note, they do one side of the street and then come back. So they're not going to just, people will probably call saying, oh, they missed me because they're on the other side of the street, but that's not the case. So they're very systematic in the way they do that.
Thank you.
So as far as bulk item pickup, so I read in the contract all the items, well, at least the examples of the items that are considered bulk. And that's, I don't have any problem with that list. The thing I wanted to get clarified, and I think it will be clarified, but so, is there a limit to the amount of bulk items a resident can have out in one week? You know, say it's a mattress, but say they decided to change all five bedrooms of their mattresses in one week, and they put out, you know, 10 mattresses. And I'm sure people have done it. I'm sure you've seen it, but.
I've seen most things you can imagine. But what we do is, you know, like a judicial set-out order or what we consider a move-in or a move-out pile, those are outside of that bulk that we'll pick up. Those are outside of that bulk that we'll pick up. Now, you can know the difference between that pretty easily. What I like to say is, you know, if it can't fit in the bed of a pickup truck or if it's, you know, three pickup truck beds full, you know, where it's very clear someone's emptying out every single room in their house, that's different than what we're talking about with, you know, minor home remodeling projects. Or, you know, if someone's got a couple of beds, it's not a big deal. If they're switching out a couple of doors in their house or maybe have some drywall and a toilet and a vanity, those are minor construction projects. What we can't do is pick up 30 yards worth of trash at someone's curb for, you know, the weekly rate's about $3.60, so...
So it's not a one-item limit, but it is a limit of if you're moving out of your house.
Yeah.
And you just dump everything out.
How many of the bulk pickups you guys were talking about this? You didn't actually get picked up?
We pick up, we pick up far more than most of our competitors. That's kind of our name. It's easiest if we just handle it when we're there. And that's what we do best. In fact, we don't even like bidding contracts that are, that are cart contents only. We're the best at unlimited service. That's how we feel. It's a lot easier for us to go and pick up everything at the house while we're there than it is to turn around. So it's either very, very clear that, and I think that William, with the emails and stuff that are sure to come at some point, will look at it and everyone will be in agreement that, yeah, you guys shouldn't have picked that up. That's a much larger than a small, you know, minor construction project.
And Rumpke's the same way. I mean, honestly, I don't, we're not going to see a difference with that. The main real provision for that in the contract is if you're a contractor doing a flip on a house or doing a, you should rent a dumpster. You should have a dumpster out there for it. You shouldn't be putting it all at the curb as you're doing. Because you, you're trying to save money, I understand that. But in the end, it's just sitting out there, and we don't want it sitting out there all week. That's your thing. Bulk pickup, just like trash, shouldn't be out there until, you know, noon the day prior. People that are doing these projects are bringing them out, you know, every day, that whole week they're working on it. So that's the main reason behind that. But I think, like they said last, we met, I think, out of all theirs, there was maybe less than 10 bulk pickups that they actually said it's too much that we can't pick up out of all the other communities they service.
Thank you.
My question is, I heard you talk about that Local Waste provides the trash bin to the customer. If you already have one that you have purchased, could you put that out as well? Basically, in addition to the one that you provide and they will pick that up as well?
Yes, yes. It's not a cart contents-only program by any means. We run the same program in Upper Arlington, actually, where everyone has a recycling cart and a trash cart. If they have extra things, extra items that don't fit in the cart, just set it out there with it. If you have another container, you're more than welcome to use that as well. Even if you don't want to use the cart that we provide, that's always an option as well. I think you did mention, you guys were talking about potentially making that the law of the land, but that's completely up to you guys. You know, a lot of times we'll have maybe a headboard or a mattress or something like that as well as the cart. We'll get the cart with the automated machine and grab the, you know, hop out and grab the mattress and throw it in as well. It's not a big deal whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
I know there were three different sizes of cans that you could opt to get. Can you completely opt out of getting a can?
Yeah, you can opt out of getting a can. We do have, with coronavirus, we did have to pull a couple of favors to get the carts ordered in the right amount of time because the cold freeze in Texas last year actually froze some of the resin plants down there. And, but we did order 20,000 95-gallon carts, so, you know, hopefully we just make that the rule and then the exception to be, you know, anyone who wants a, needs a smaller one for medical purposes or something like that.
Councilmember Cotner.
Thank you. You just keep mentioning a couple of times about COVID coming back. How much were you all affected? We saw with Rumpke them losing some people. How much did it affect Local Waste Services?
We were delayed in service by exactly zero days through the entire pandemic. And we're really proud about that. Something that we've worked really hard with over the last several years before the pandemic even is creating what we call, it's a driver training program. And we have a lot more success if we're able to take someone who's a hard worker and teach them how to throw trash and then work with them to get their CDL. And we pay them more as they get their temps and then they get their license. And then they've really become part of the team and the fabric of what we are. So we had an excess of those employees going into the pandemic. We actually, for a period, our employees weren't able to take any vacations. So we paid them out 60 hours of pay for their vacation as an extra check, you know. So once your vacation week, you're just able to cash that out. You know, working on our, the way that we treat our employees. We don't have any temporary employees. Everybody's 100% eligible for the 401K, for health insurance, for vacation, all those types of things. And we also really are really proud that we're the highest-paying trash provider in central Ohio. And we've got, you know, plans for the future and how we're going to continue to be that place. Our guys work harder than everybody else and we pay them more, so...
Are they all single-man crews or do you have, is there somebody driving and somebody picking up?
So we have both what we call rear load, where the guy, you know, is hanging on the back of the trash truck the old-fashioned way. We have a lot of those. And then we have, we have 40, I think 46 of those. And we have, we have, we'll have 26 of the automated piece of equipment that will service your community with. Now, yard waste service will always be done in the rear-load system because if we try to pick up a paper bag with an automated arm, it'll just break and go all over the ground. So we still have to do that manually. But by and large, unless there's an equipment issue that we're working through, we will pick up, you know, all the residents with the automated machine in this community. A number of communities that don't have, maybe they have tighter alleys and things like that that don't just allow us to automate those or, you know, as, that was our way of doing it before with two guys on the truck. So there's a driver and then a helper on the step. But with the automated machine, it's just one.
And then the other question, you've mentioned a couple of the communities that you serve currently. Can you run down those again, who you all are providing for that you're under contract with or that you're going to even be entering contract with that you know for sure?
I've got the full list actually here in the bid. Of course. So the full list, River Leah, Groveport, Grove City, Jackson Township, Norwich Township, Asheville, Sharon Township, Harrison Township, Whitehall, Pleasant Township, Clinton Township, Village of Bryce, Worthington, Urban Crest, Madison Township, Pleasantville, Carroll, City Hilliard, Plain City, Minerva Park, Sunbury, Granville Township, Buckeye Lake, Thurston, Johnstown, Truro Township right next door, Violet Township, Pleasant, or Millersport, Upper Arlington, Hamilton Township, Lockborn, Pataskla, and Kingston Township. And we recently, we've got the commitment letter from the city of Gahan as well as Reynoldsburg.
And then, it sounds like, again, everything sounds great. I mean, everything you're telling is selling a good product, which I appreciate and would expect no less representing your company. What about your customer critique process when there are problems? I'm sure somebody's trash is missed. They're calling Mr. Dorman to start. They're calling the mayor's office. That's usually what happens. They hear it here first. But how do you, how do you all then handle after that? What would the resident expect? And are they going to get a person if they try to call Local Waste Service? Are they going to get routed to a voicemail? Or what would they expect from Local Waste Service in that problem?
That's a great question. We do have a full customer service staff that reports to me in the office at all times from, you know, 8:00 a.m. until 5:00. And the number to call them is 614-409-9375. They'll ring through to them. The expectation is to answer the phone within under four minutes. That's our expectation. It's not always perfect. But we have, we have a lot of different individuals who are there and our call queue is typically much less than that. Now, we have a customer portal on our website as well where someone can email us. They can just go right on there and type something up real quick and that goes to our company email. And that gets passed around and addressed immediately. If we have a missed stop situation, we actually pull the camera footage from that and we'll be able to see, you know, what did our driver do? Why did our driver do that? Was the trash actually out? Was it not out? And then we're able to follow up with our driver then and use that as a coaching moment. With this contract in particular, we're going to have a supervisor in the area on the collection days and then the next day. So if there's an address that gets missed, it shouldn't be a big deal to give someone a courtesy pickup. Typically, we can count, we can track those right on their account. So if someone gets a courtesy pickup and then they want to do that once a month, you know, we can have a conversation about that at that time. But it should be really easy to navigate those situations with our software and everything that we have to address those situations.
I apologize. I thought of one more question I'd forgotten to ask.
No, you're absolutely fine.
On the, since we're splitting into two days in the city, holiday weeks. You know, everybody's kind of used to it here. We pick up Thursday, but there's a holiday on Tuesday. We know it's coming Friday. So what does the holiday pickup look like in the city?
So if the holiday falls before the collection day, everything just gets pushed back one day. So if there's a holiday on a Friday, no difference. If there's a holiday on a weekend, no difference. If there's a holiday on Monday, everything just gets shifted one day. So if your collection day was Tuesday, it's now Wednesday. Yeah, we don't...
That's what it sounds like.
Everybody does the holiday schedule pretty much the same because the landfills, we have to follow the landfills and take the trash there. So, you know, we can't pick up when they're not open and so on and so forth.
Great, thank you.
A quick question about furniture. There seems to be a shift in things like mattresses or chairs and couches. And I remember some time ago, there was a problem with communities having problems with bedbugs. And so you had to, I thought that was the reason why you had to cover it in plastic. But I've noticed some of our residents are not covering their furniture in plastic. Is there still a policy for that?
The policy is to have it wrapped in plastic. That's the best way. You know, if there's a rainstorm that comes up and there's a mattress out there and the mattress weighs 400 pounds and we get there, we're not going to be able to move that either. So that's, it's best practice to go ahead and wrap it. You know, it might not be infested when it leaves your home, but then when it's sitting at the curb, you know, it could get some kind of infestation. So just, it's best in everyone's interest to go ahead and wrap those items.
Thank you.
Not to say that our guys won't go ahead and throw it in if it's not bad and it's not wrapped, you know, because they'll do that too, but rule of thumb is to go ahead and wrap those.
Councilmember Paco.
One question. If the residents have extra bulk trash between the pickup days, do you have a provision, you can send somebody else if they pay extra and come pick up those things? Or like, can they call for additional pickup on certain days?
Not as part of this contract. They could call and get a different, maybe like a roll-off dumpster or something like that. We offer, you know, 10-yard all the way up to 40-yard roll-off dumpsters. But as far as the actual trash contract, that wouldn't be part of the residential contract. We're really excited about this. You know, I've been excited. I put the whole bid together myself after reading through everything. And we've been talking with the owner about it for months. And, you know, we've been unsuccessful bidding the city of Reynoldsburg several times in the past. And we're just really excited to offer your residents the, you know, what we think is the best service in central Ohio. And look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Madam President, we have several people wanting to speak this evening. Tia Johnson?
Good evening, everyone. President, members of council. Hello, my name is Tia Johnson. I am the founder of Fresh Bloom Bins, a curbside bin sanitation service and a longtime Reynoldsburg resident. I am here today to ask members of council to reconsider the decision to switch trash haulers and increasing costs. Members of the community will be asked to change a longtime behavior with no real added benefit. We could really invest into recycling efforts, environmental knowledge, and behaviors in the community and schools. We've seen how residents bag their water bottles or put those Kroger bags into the recycling bin. I believe applying an initiative and pairing it with some kind of education would really move in the right direction. I've actually coined it recycle right, get your bins wiped. As the founder, I really wanted to create an alignment with current and future sustainability models. With a corporation like Rumpke supporting small businesses like us, I believe that it could really bring some fresh ideas to the table, create jobs, and increase sustainability and sanitation efforts. I would like to ask if we can create a collaborative approach with any outstanding issues with Rumpke, our current hauler, and keep them as a service provider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I apologize. Can you say the name of your company again?
Fresh Bloom Bins.
Fresh Bloom Bins?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Super girly, right?
Madam President, our next speaker is Arlie Owens.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Arlie Owens. I live at 7954 Slate Ridge Boulevard. I've been a resident in Reynoldsburg since 1995. And I'm here today to just simply say a couple of things about the ordinance that's being considered regarding creating the office position of diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's a long time coming. I've read the ordinance. It's very well-written. As a matter of fact, it looks like my old PD when I was working for the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. I was the EEO and Contract Compliance Officer there for about five years. The city of Reynoldsburg has a lot of work to do in terms of increasing the diversity of its workforce and also creating and offering opportunities for contracts for minority, female, and underserved businesses. So anyway, I just think that it's something that we ought to consider. I think it should pass, and I'd be willing to help as any way I can to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, the next speaker is Franklin Davis.
Good evening, council. I just had a couple of quick questions and comments regarding our proposed waste contract, especially after listening to them this evening. It just seems that there is a difference in services offered, especially as it regards to bulk pickup and those whole-house moves. And those are concerns that I just happen to notice see raised by a decent amount of Reynoldsburg citizens online. And I have heard mixed reviews on how they have fulfilled their contracts with some of their other localities, especially with like Whitehall and Pataskla. And if some of those same concerns that have been raised in other communities continue in our community, are, is there anything in the contract that allows us to move on from the contract? And is there anything that precludes us from going into the contract if the services being offered are not, in fact, quite equal? Is, are we allowed to get another bid that includes bulk pickup comparable to what Rumpke currently offers as opposed to getting a bin or container at our house at additional personal cost? Because that isn't something that oftentimes we have to do right now. If it's a contractor or something of that nature, sure. But if it's an individual who is doing a remodel of their house or has occasion to buy a decent amount of furniture, then I have not seen them have to bear that type of cost. And so that does seem like a difference in service. And so what is our recourse to avoid that personal cost for our citizens? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all. Are there any comments from council? Do we have any comments from, I'm sorry, yes?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to share, let's see. On July 16th, there was a Books and Badges event that Reynoldsburg Police Department participated in. Empowerment Youth Foundation actually hosted the event at Huber Park. And I just wanted to publicly thank RPD. We have the best police force in all of Ohio, not central Ohio. We have the best police force in all of Ohio, not central Ohio. And I just wanted to thank Deputy Chief Grzel for her leadership. I don't have the names of all the officers that participated, but they were so engaging. They read a book about tigers. They asked questions. The kids asked questions. And when it was over, the police officers answered questions from not only the children, but also adults. And it ranged in questions in terms of school safety, summer safety, water safety, and the best way to transport, transport guns and so forth. And so it was just a great time had by all. And along with the Licking County Starfish, they serviced over 50 children and adults in the rain. And so we're really excited what RPD was able to do to partner with Empower Youth Foundation, so much so that I understand that there is plans for Civic Park sometime. So I just wanted to say that and also to challenge my council colleagues and the mayor and city attorney to join me at the back-to-school supply drive to drop off donations. It's that time again. And this is organized under the leadership of Ms. April Darling. And so there will be dropping off supplies on July 31st from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then we'll have folks come and pick up their supplies on August 21st and it's drive-through servicing again. Thank you.
Councilmember Baker.
I just want to point this out instead of waiting to the end. And I told Police Chief I was going to say this. It came across my Facebook feed. Somebody had posted, it was, it wasn't an incident, but it was a issue where police was called. And it was about young kids playing with water guns. And somebody reported saying that the kids were playing with guns. And so RPD came out and investigated. And I can say this, that the person posted was very positive, RPD. They said they handled the situation very professionally. And they basically came to conclusion that somebody had called the police for basically no reason. These kids were just having fun with water guns. They were playing with super soakers and stuff like that. So I did want to mention that on the record, that RPD did handle that situation very professionally. We all know what's going on in the world, and it could have been something that turned tragic, but it wasn't. So I just want to give kudos to RPD for that.
Do we have any comments from Mayor Begany?
Madam President, just a couple of quick ones. You know, we are obviously, I would say, neck deep right now in planning for the Tomato Festival, getting those last things together. As a matter of fact, if you want to take a look, here is one of the shirts that is being proposed from Starstruck for our sale. And the camera out there as well. Starstruck is one of a couple of vendors that is proposing to have these T-shirts for sale to celebrate our Tomato Festival this year. While we're still doing that, we also had a successful music in the cul-de-sac as well as Concert on the Lawn. Concert on the Lawn was last night. The music on the cul-de-sac was last Thursday. This Thursday is the last music on the cul-de-sac. I believe it's on Ashley Drive around in that area for the Nepali Heritage Dance Group that will be performing. So I hope everybody can join out with that. I also have, I'm going to turn the microphone over to the Deputy Chief as well. She has one other thing. But I would like to thank Councilman Stacy Baker for agreeing to join me in the dunk tank. You did.
We thought we was having a wrapping battle. What are you talking about?
Nope. On, at the Tomato Festival on Saturday, August 14th, and that will be in support of the Reynoldsburg Education Foundation. But don't worry, I see a lot of worried faces up there. There's still time for the rest of you to join. Plenty of time. There's two dunk tanks, so there's plenty of room for others out there. Just let me know. In the meantime, Deputy Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam President and members of council, first of all, thank you so much for your public support. That means the world to our officers. We are intentional with the types of folks that we hire and the way that we train them. So we appreciate your support for that. We do have National Night Out on August 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. this year. It's at the Oaks Apartments. Ms. Darling is also involved in that. And we would invite you to come out and join us for National Night Out.
What time is that?
6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It's a great opportunity for the community and law enforcement to get together.
And what's the location?
The Oaks on Wagner Road.
The Oaks. Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have our public hearing. There is a public hearing for the update to Chapter 11, the city's zoning code. Would the clerk please read the ordinance? An ordinance to amend Chapter 11 Planning and Zoning Code for the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. And Madam President, we have one person who's indicated they would like to speak. Cassandra Kurtz.
Do you want me to give a presentation first? Okay.
Andrew, you really need to be.
Hello. Good evening, council. My name is Cassandra Kurtz. I'm currently a resident at 480 West Broad Street, Columbus. I'm going to start, and then I'm going to back up and give a little bit of background because my request of you as council members relates to the upcoming zoning. As a person, I think that we each have a responsibility to make our corner of the world better. And I want to be part of the Reynoldsburg community and make it better. In the past few years, I have been a Girl Scout leader. I have been a living kidney donor who gave an Ohio father back his life. I have been a member of a team that raised $118,554 for a nonprofit central Ohio charity that services military victim, excuse me, military veterans and their families. I'm a leader and a community organizer. I'm a veterinarian who's passionate about public health. I'm a giver and I'm a doer. And I want to bring everything that I have to your community so it can be my community too. All this relates to the fact that last week I had a request in, well, the city had a request in to rezone and revise some of the zoning code in the area of Reynoldsburg. And a parcel that I am in a contingent land contract in was part of that rezoning request. So most of the rezoning revisions passed, but my parcel that I'm in the contingent land contract in did not, and it was removed from rezoning because it's currently zoned commercial. And I want to make a home in Reynoldsburg. And I want to change the zoning so that it is suburban residential, same as the parcel just north of it. So because that zoning revision for that particular parcel that I'm interested in failed last week, I am here today to request appeal from you as a council to override that decision from last week and revert the zoning back to suburban residential. The property was residential and had a home on it three years ago. The home burned down and the zoning reverted to commercial, which is what most of the area around it is right now. This zoning is currently not practical. The parcel in its entirety is 0.6 acres. 50% of it is covered by a floodplain. Currently, there is no water or sewer hookup. And in fact, the city sewer is 430 feet away, necessitating an onsite septic system. The ravine at the front of the property makes estimates to run water to the property $8,000 to $10,000, not including a tap fee. So the property's got some issues. The total available space for commercial use after accounting for floodplains, setbacks, parking requirements, and other commercial necessities leaves less than one-tenth of an acre for a commercial building. In short, no commercial enterprise is going to touch this parcel. It doesn't make sense for them to do so. It will sit, as it has for the last three years, vacant with trash, beer cans, and burned-out spots where people have started small fires. The best thing to do would be to return it to its previous zoning of suburban residential as the only thing that this land could potentially be useful for is a small, single-family home. This would make the land useful, prevent loitering and crime on a vacant lot, and give tax revenue to the city. The Building and Planning Committee last week was concerned that revising the current commercial zoning would result in a hole in zoning coverage. What it would actually do is extend the current suburban residential zoning that's just north of it down into it as well. I would submit that a useful, productive piece of land rather than an empty lot is better for the city. I appreciate your time and thank you for considering my request.
No other comments? If council has any questions, absolutely. Does anyone have any questions?
Excuse me, Madam President.
You can close the hearing then if there are no further comments from residents.
Excuse me, Madam President.
I had a question.
Okay. Councilwoman Meredith Lawson-Roe has a question.
Thank you. Where is this part of the property?
This property, this property is actually about a mile and a quarter straight down toward Taylor Stration Road. It's directly across from the Glenn Rest, Glenn Rest Memorial Cemetery.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? If there's no other questions, this public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
We don't, we do not have any other additional communications this evening. We'll move on to our motions. A motion to authorize the clerk of council to return any liquor permits requests received during the August recess to mark without a request for hearing as long as the Reynoldsburg Police Department finds no reason for a hearing while council is in recess for the month of August 2021, unless the police department finds a reason for a hearing prompting a special council meeting. This motion is for housekeeping purposes to effectively resolve any liquor permits submitted during recess that Chief Baker's investigation determines are acceptable. Are there any questions or comments from council? May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Councilmember Strickland, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Meredith Lawson-Roe, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have a motion to recess the Reynoldsburg City Council for the month of August 2021. This motion is also for housekeeping purposes to approve council's August recess. Should the administration deem it necessary to call council back in session for a special meeting, please contact Clerk Prasher to determine the earliest possible meeting date. Are there any questions or comments from council? May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Councilmember Savadi, is there a second? Councilmember Baker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have reports. Clerk of Court, report, Clerk Prasher.
The clerk of court submitted monies collected from the courts held on June 3rd, 10th, 17th, and 24th, amounting to $17,753.
Next, we'll have our Development Parks and Recreation Committee. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Madam, excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. This is the Development Parks and Recreation Committee meeting for July 26, 2021. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson-Roe, Councilmember Pacarrel, myself, and you, Madam President. The first item on the agenda is the ordinance to amend Chapter 11 Planning and Zoning Code for the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. This legislation, this legislation is back in the committee to discuss the recommendations from the Planning Commission. Director Boucher?
Thank you, Chairman Baker, and other members of council, Madam President. Now it's my time to talk. So before you tonight, there's three different additions that you, you have in front of you. The residential design requirements, the residential setback for RVs, recreational vehicles, and the portable storage addition. Those are the three things that were add-ons and new that you have not seen that was outside of your packet. And so for the record, I'm just going to go through and briefly go over all of the changes that are, that are made and, and what Planning Commission and their recommendation was. So the first one, medical marijuana, defining it separate outside of the pharmacy. Also, the business regulation ordinance that City Attorney Shook was working on. Credit for green space, we updated that. Obviously, the design requirements, as I had mentioned, new commercial signage, some, some tweaks there. Roof-mounted solar, the elimination of the zoning permit if it's roof-mounted because we're already doing it within the building department for a building code. Anything that's ground-mounted will still need a zoning permit. Height transition requirements, we removed those from the inside district, but we added them to all the residential. We set that at 200%. Major site plan applications, 21 days is, is the new requirement. And then we added in a city engineer staff report. We defined small format grocery, which we did not have that were in there. We added office use to the old Reynoldsburg Neighborhood District. There's already office uses on Lancaster currently, so we wanted to make sure that continued. The setbacks for the RV were updated. Removal of certain glass requirements for the inside districts, new side yard setbacks for suburban residential, eight feet to five. Map changes, as was stated earlier in the public hearing, it went from the three original ones that you had saw in the previous two meetings down to two, which was the parcel on Lancaster and the parcel on Oak Valley. The Planning Commission felt that the surrounding area, especially knowing that there's a 10-acre parcel to the east of 8300 East Main Street, that, that was just recently discussed, felt like if that was up for sale, it could be parceled with this. And they felt like it would be, you know, advantageous to keep those all at the same zoning. So they decided to keep that. They had two different types of chances to revert that back and keep that as suburban residential as was proposed, but they decided to take that out and send it with a recommendation that that not be changed. And then the addition of portable storage, that was in the old zoning code. So if anybody's looking to have like a pod storage in their yard, we, we now put that back into the code for whatever reason that was missed. And so we wanted to add that back. So those are the main changes across the board. They've all been submitted to MOLI. And those three that you have in front of you, as I had mentioned, those are the ones that were not in the packet previously for the previous council meetings. I'm just opening it up to any questions.
Any questions from the committee? Councilman Cotner?
Okay. So you always have so much to bring and a lot to digest. Few questions if we could. It's always hard to tell on the map too, but the, the parcels, to clarify, were Lancaster Avenue, the one down by the vet clinic and is, well, not vet clinic, but the veterinarian's office.
Correct.
So that's the one that we're changing that from commercial.
Community commercial to innovation.
Innovation.
Right.
And that, again, they stay, that veterinary office is still good in the innovation district.
Correct. It is a permitted use.
Permitted use. If they want to expand, they want to do whatever opening up they can, it just limits future, someone else coming in, whatever it may be. But this is specifically to address that. It's not about trying to spot zone.
Correct. In fact, we, we think that actually the community commercial was probably spot zoning when we did it because there's no other community commercial, generally speaking, in the area. The two closest, you know, the three really, you already have innovation that's in there. You have suburban residential, and you have a residential medium. So we wanted to limit how many different uses were actually on Lancaster Avenue. We felt this was a better fit for the area. It still allowed that current use in its place.
Okay. And then the... And then the behind Speedway, that's the other one that we are changing that one, so it's going to be residential medium.
Correct.
So that they can put a little more multifamily, but this is definitely not commercial use. Can't go to, we're not talking office space, anything like that.
Correct. And that was, it was requested by the landowner to have that as well as actually some of the residents that came.
I know the residents want to make sure there's no commercial back there.
Right.
And I know the landowner wants to put multiple houses, so again, seems like a reasonable use. That's fine. You know, it's, again, keeps commercial off going back into that neighborhood, so I, you know, I, I think that makes sense, no problem. I just wanted to, again, clarify where we are exactly and which specific parcels.
Correct.
The old Reynoldsburg Neighborhood District then, office use in there, and I know specifically you talked about a couple of the parcels that are down there. What does that mean to some of those residential homes that are there in that, that neighborhood? You know, are you're not going to get an office pop-up next to somebody on Broadwood Drive, for example?
Correct. I mean, this is, basically, it's allowing the existing use currently right now because of the way that the code is set. If somebody were to move out of said building three months later, they wouldn't be grandfathered in any longer, and then therein lies the problem, and they couldn't backfill those parcels that are there. I don't think you're going to find that there's going to be a problem, say, a home on Broadwood Drive, there's going to be an office park that gets built next to it or something of that nature. They, they all have specific code requirements for when they're going to build out. I, I, I would say though that it would allow, say, for an architect to be able to open up an in-home business, and that's a little bit different because you, you, we're looking at commercial buildings versus in-home occupations, and there's a separate section of the code for those, so.
And we do allow in-home occupations in, in multiple areas.
Correct.
So, you know, again, that's in-home business, we've talked about that, you and I, one-on-one for a long time.
Right.
Just making sure that they are handled correctly and some that push the limits a little bit anyway.
Agreed.
I, I'm, my bigger concern would be, yes, you've got one of those historic homes in, in the old Reynoldsburg area, and somebody just happens to buy two parcels next door, and I mean, there's a few places that you could see somebody wanting to somehow maneuver something, so I'm just making sure that we're not going to be running down that kind of line.
Correct. And I think the design guidelines that we have specifically in the old Reynoldsburg Neighborhood District, if they were to build anything, they would be so stringent that they would have to tie into the historical character, it would make it extremely difficult for somebody like that to build something that would be out of character and out of place.
I even know, you know, Trivium has got some parcels down there, and I would, again, I would just hate to see in some of those areas, something turned into commercial as opposed to, again, in-home architect, fantastic, that makes a great sense, but you know, or somebody puts up a duplex, you know, into there, those things make sense, I get that, that fits the goal and agenda, but I just want to avoid true commercial that.
Right.
Well, we're kind of close to the old Reynoldsburg, and so. Okay. Thank you for some of those clarifications, and then last but not least that I want to talk about is this small parcel of .6 acres on Main Street. Staff suggested to Planning Commission to keep that as residential?
So what we did was, understanding that she had first went in for an application for a use variance. We don't want to do use variance, it sets a really bad precedent, and it basically undermines city council's decision-making ability. So you zoned a specific parcel, we should stick with that, we allow different conditional use, that's what BZBA is set up for, so.
And looking to get rid of a lot of variances anyway.
Right, correct. Really, we really should.
This code is to try to make sure it's got a purpose.
Trying to streamline that. So working with City Attorney Shook, myself, Emily Wheeler, our Planning and Zoning Administrator, understanding that really it needed to be a rezoning. And a rezoning for residential is about $1,400. And it just didn't seem appropriate to charge the $1,400 when we're already going through the process. So we included it in there without a full recommendation, understanding that we could see the hardship. There was clearly a hardship that was met and that was there. There used to be a home that was there on the site, and we felt that it was best to leave it to Planning Commission and City Council to make that recommendation on whether or not it should be or should not be a residential site.
Okay. And they said it should not be, but it sure makes a lot of sense that it should be. I mean, it, it's, it's a tiny little piece, and it's got residents, you know, as she said, just north. I mean, I, I know the parcel that we're talking of, the old football field is right there, but there's a, there's still a road in between that, I'm not sure how those are going to tie together if this little parcel.
The parcel they were speaking of is a parcel to directly, it's, it's attached. It's currently for sale, there's actually a lake that's on there.
Oh, okay.
So if you surround that land that's over there, so the parcel's directly to the north, it's actually that same parcel that's, that's zoned to that, and then if you go further, you really get into the Green Tree duplexes that are there, and then there's some other suburban residential homes that have very long lots that are back there. So it is a very unique, challenging lot. There's obviously the creek that sort of runs through there, it goes up underneath of Main Street and then ties into Glenn Rest's stormwater system. It, it's a challenging site regardless what you do with it. And then obviously, it already being on well and septic, and there's sewer that's all the way up to the north, and it would be extremely cost prohibitive to put in there. I think that they felt like if you combined it with the parcels to the east, it ties it all back in together. But I, I don't think that anybody had strong feelings one way or the other, to be honest with you.
And for this woman who just spoke, who has purchased or in contract, I don't know, has you already closed on it, you own it?
In contingent contract, pending rezon.
Gotcha. So.
Licking County Land Bank.
Land Bank, I remembered saying it was Land Bank, that's right. Does she have, you talked about the $1,400 fee, can, is, is that still, would that be an option further, would she have to then appeal back to say, okay, I want to spot zone this one and pay $1,400, and is that, or would her next step be saying, I'm done, I'm not going to buy that land and off we go?
Well, if it was, if it would normally be denied in a regular zoning and it came to city council and it was denied and, or denied at Planning Commission, she appealed it to city council, and you denied it again, it could not be rezoned for a year. That's stipulated in the zoning code specifically. And so in, in this context, honestly, I'd get a legal opinion, honestly.
Yep, sure. In, in this context, she could get a second bite at the apple because this is legislatively initiated. So first of all, because Planning Commission did not recommend to city council to rezone this parcel, you would need three-fourths of the member of council, there's six voting members tonight, you would need unanimous approval. If, if that were not to come to pass, the Ms. Kurtz could file an application for rezoning, pay $1,400, and go through essentially the same process where it goes to Planning Commission and then comes back to council. I think our thought was, we didn't, we certainly didn't want her to have to spend $1,400 if there was another way. So that's why we went this route. Okay. And you said there's not a strong feeling positively or negatively then. You've, you've, you've been very open with your views of much of this. What would be your recommendation to council on the professional side? Because it sure makes a lot of sense that this small parcel is occupied, and I mean, we have a lot of residents along Main Street, I'm not sure how this negatively impacts our code if, if this person is able to live and develop at that home site.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you're going to press me for a decision here based on, I guess, professional knowledge.
Well, it, it's not like you, you don't have some history of it. I mean, I'm not asking something totally out of left field, so.
Um, I, 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 I also don't have strong feelings one way or the other. I understand where Planning Commission is. You can see the parcel that's to the east and how it could be tied in, understanding that that parcel is currently for sale. And I can also empathize with Ms. Kurtz in understanding that she wants to bring her expertise, she wants to be a resident of the city of Reynoldsburg. The, the home that she's trying to build is a very cute A-frame home, it was given to us. I think she's probably got some challenges headed her way when she does go through that. But I, I wouldn't be necessarily against it in a professional manner if we rezoned it this evening and it was built as a house. I think that it would be a great home. I do feel that there's probably some traffic problems, and there would definitely be some concerns of that nature of getting in and out of Main Street, and there's not necessarily sort of a crossover, especially if you're making a left-hand turn. You know, that's the reason why we zoned it all, you know, commercial. I don't think that the city's losing out on tax revenue if you, you know, if you zone it tonight as suburban residential. So it would be hard pressed for me to, to push it one way or the other because I can see both arguments and sides, and, and, you know, she certainly has a hardship, there's no question.
Well, if, if the person is willing to take the risk of a left turn onto Main Street, I mean, I think that's, you know, she's an adult, she knows how to drive an operated vehicle safely, I, I don't, I think we can not worry about that one with all the other traffic issues there. The property that's for sale, sign's been up there for quite a while, so it's, you know, unless, unless there's something else that's beating down the doors, I, I, I'm not sure how this would, you know, impact the development either, so I don't, again, I, I kind of, that'd be the only one that I'd like to see adjusted myself, so. Okay. I've said my piece, asked my questions, so that's where I'll be at. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any other questions from the committee? Councilmember Pacorrel?
About this property, I mean, I have a strong feeling that I, I would say I would, by hearing the resident, I think we should yawn, or rejoin it back to the, what she's asking for, because it's small, very small-sized property, it's very close to my house, I, I can see the difficulty there, and that's my, my opinion on this one.
Okay. Anybody else on council? I'm sorry, committee? Anybody on council? Aye?
You spoke about, and she spoke about it as well, the sewer. Is there an issue there? Or, and then you spoke about a lake and maybe how it ties into the cemetery?
Oh, that was.
So I'm trying to, I, I think I know where the property is, but, and it goes down a little hill, right?
Correct. Two separate things. One, I was speaking about storm sewer, storm system, so that's like your water runoff going in that lake, and it goes under Glenn Rest, different from the actual sewer itself.
Okay.
You know, true black water. There is no sewer that's there currently active on the site. There is water that's to the north on Main Street that she could tap into for city services, but she would need to put in a septic, and I'm sure she could talk probably more about all of that because she's obviously dug in and did her research. The closest sewer is all the way up, a little past Green Tree, and what, how, four, 430 feet.
Okay. So did you mention that there's a lake in the back, or?
Not in her property, the adjacent property to the east, there's the lake that sits over there.
Okay. I'm not from, I don't recall that. Okay.
I call it a lake, but it looks like a pond, but anything that's over an acre in size is actually considered a lake.
Okay. Is there any issue with flooding over in that area? I just know that there's certain areas throughout Reynoldsburg where I live, especially just on a regular street, where we have a flooding problem that's been resolved recently, but is there any waterways where it would cause any type of flooding back there?
There's a creek bank that goes from that pond that I had mentioned, it goes up underneath of Main Street, and then it ties back into the storm system that's there for Glenn Rest, and then they have sort of a, a pond that's across the way that you can see as you're driving past Main Street. But I, I don't think that there's any flooding concerns on the site, or is it? Yeah, go ahead, it's probably better if you speak.
So according to the county auditor's website, 60, well, about 55% of the parcel is in the 100-year floodplain. So that's a big problem with the commercial development because you start with, it's actually .59 acres, and you take the entire back half off due to floodplain because you can't build there. You know, so you're losing half the parcel usage right there. It's not a frequent flood, but it's, it's considered a floodplain and therefore cannot be built on.
Okay.
The entire back half.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question. Ms. Cassandra, so are you planning on building a house at this particular, on this particular parcel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I just want to build a small, single-family home, cute little A-frame. I know you guys don't have the pictures, the, the Planning Commission and all that had, had access to those, but just, just for myself and my dog.
It is very nice.
And legally, Attorney Shook, you don't see it being a problem if we went down the road, changing it back to the SR?
No, you would need, as I mentioned before, six votes. We did give all the proper public notices for this rezoning because it was part of the initial zoning changes. So all the notices went out for the Planning Commission meeting. And so what, what I would suggest is that, so there would be two motions tonight relative to the zoning code in city, in the committee. One would be a motion to amend to add all the other changes besides the East Main Street parcel. And then you would do a second motion to amend to add in the East Main Street parcel and rezone it suburban residential. Then it will go to the full council for a vote. If it has six votes at that time, then you will have it rezoned.
Sorry, I was trying to write that down, as you were saying.
You know, Councilmember Baker, even as I was saying it, I just reflected that the better process might actually be in committee, move to amend to add in all the other recommendations from Planning Commission besides the East Main Street recommendation. Or actually including the East Main Street recommendation from Planning Commission. And then when it goes to city council in the emergency legislation, remove that from the consent agenda. At that time, you would need to make a motion to amend it, then to change the zoning designation for that parcel to suburban residential. Do a roll call, if you have six votes, then you have the amendment. And then you take the zoning code back to council for vote at that time. The reason I suggest that process is that you want to know if you have the six votes before you put the full zoning code to council.
Okay, so let me clarify that, that we make the motion to accept the recommendations besides Main Street, or just make the recommend, uh, accept the recommendation as is and then change it in council?
And change it in council, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
That way you don't run the risk of approving it in committee, and then it goes to council, and it's a five-to-one vote to approve, and then you went against Planning Commission, and then none of the changes are adopted.
Okay. Is there any other questions from council or the committee? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to make the motion that we forward this on the council as is. Is there a second? What the recommendation of the Planning Committee, Planning Commission recommendations? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pacorrel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, this motion will be forwarded to council for this next reading.
Point of clarification, if I may, I just want to make sure that council does not think that we changed this from SR to the Main Street District. It was never SR, SR is our new portion of our zoning, it was actually CC long before that. Originally, when it was built, it was a, it was a house, so it's going back to its original use, not necessarily its original zoning.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the second item on the agenda for the committee, an ordinance accepting, approving, and ratifying the submitted recommendations of several City of Reynoldsburg Tax Incentive Review, of several, let me restart this over. Recommendation of several City of Reynoldsburg Tax Incentive Review councils. Director Boucher?
Thank you, Chairman Baker.
It was a tongue twister.
That's okay. This is our annual review when we do our Turk meetings. We do it with three different counties, Fairfield, Licking, and Franklin. This goes over our TIF documents that we already have currently in place. We meet with each county auditor, as well as the school district, the city, and various other jurisdictions, including our townships. We go through, we ensure that everything is still operating, we count dollars and cents that was operated in. We voted on to continue all, in all of our districts, and I just asked that city council accept this as an ordinance and approving and ratifying our Turk meeting.
Okay. As usual, is there any questions from the committee? Any from council? Okay, seeing none, I'll make the motion that we forward this ordinance on to council for its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pacorrel. All those in, oh, any further discussion? No, okay. Sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it, this ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. The third item on the agenda for, for this committee, an ordinance authorizing a merit into, into a contract to purchase real property to be used by the City of Reynoldsburg. Director Bell?
Thank you.
You standing at the podium.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Baker. This ordinance is before you this evening. We will consider this zero Priestley Road as it does not have an address. If you have went onto Priestley Road, you could probably see that this is the entryway to the north that goes into Pine Quarry Park. We are purchasing said property from the Home Owners Association that's on there for $2,500. This would allow us to control that entryway feature, and so when we go to redo and make some improvements to Pine Quarry Park, this will so when we go to redo and make some improvements to Pine Quarry Park, this will be a more emphasized entrance there to the north. We were negotiating for the last few years, finally got their HOA to accept. They first wanted several, several thousands of dollars. And so this is $2,500 plus a contingency to ensure for tax titles and closing costs.
Any questions from the committee? Councilman Cotton?
Mine's just really small. I'm kind of curious. Seller shows the Nance family. Was that a mistake on here?
I'm sorry.
On paperwork?
Yeah, that is a mistake, Councilman Cotton. I just found out about the purchase when it was put on. And we're actually going to do a different contract than the one you have. I think Director Bausch should do his level best to use the one that we'd used before, but we're going to use a different, smaller contract like we used with West Licking when we engaged in that transfer.
It doesn't need to be as detailed as that one was.
No.
So this contract will look, this won't be the contract?
Different, yes. Yeah. This will stick through three readings. We're not in a rush to be able to do this. But we did want to put it on as their council had asked.
And has their homeowners association then, they voted on it? They've agreed to the sale?
They did. They had to go get signatures from everyone from the HOA to go and agree to this. And that's why it took them so long. I believe their current president is Fred Knop, who collected said signatures. They got counsel and then they approached us and said, this is what we're going to do.
And since it's already used for an entrance, we're, again, we know Priestley already has its challenges. The purchase of this isn't going to impact more traffic, impact more neighbors nearby. The adjacent neighbors are comfortable with this sale and change?
Councilman Cotton, the only thing that would be changed with it would be a, most likely, a some sort of a crosswalk walk feature that would allow people from the other side to enter the park. And then the rest of it would be more of a defined entrance. Outside of that, there shouldn't be any, any impact whatsoever. No parking, no additional anything that would go in.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and forward this one to council for its first reading. Do I have a second? Councilmember Packerell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. This motion will be forwarded to council for its first reading. As there is no further business in front of the Development, Park and Recreation Committee. Madam President, it's back to you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our Public Service and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Strickland.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for July 26, 2021. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotton, Councilmember Lawson-Roe, Councilmember Packerell, myself, and President Jenkins. Item number one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with local waste service, LTD, to be the sole provider of solid waste, recyclable materials, and yard waste collection services for waste generated by residential units, municipality facilities, and various special events in the City of Reynoldsburg. I know, is Director Dorman still here? If there's any other questions?
Director Dorman had to step away. He'll, he's trying to return it. A family issue that came up. If there are any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Right. Are there any questions from the committee on the legislation? Any from council? I move we-
Just, just real quick and a clarification about this. I understand that they came in, that local waste came in, lowest best bid has been the term. And I just want to clarify that that best bid was, was it 20%? Or no, I'm sorry, Rumpke, Rumpke was going to raise their prices 20%. Was that correct? If we would have went with Rumpke?
Rumpke's rate was going to be 20%.
So it's, okay. I was just trying to, just clarifying, you know.
The, sorry, because Director Dorman's not here and I have it in front of me. The current Rumpke price is 1913 per month on their bid. They were increasing the price for the three-year term by more than $3 a month. And then for the first and second year options, it would increase a dollar fifty-nine more a month beyond the first three years. So it's, it's a, I haven't done the math in my head and I was told there would be no math, but it's about 15, 20%.
Fifteen. Okay, that kind of figure. My math might have been off by a few dollars and cents. So I just wanted, on the record and for the community who's watching and who's here, that the difference in pricing of local waste and Rumpke. And remember, this goes on to your water and sewage bill under refuge. So, you know, when the committee's making this decision, just, you know, take in mind that that's a significant increase over the contract if we would have went with Rumpke than with local waste. I've never dealt with local waste, so I don't have anything positive or negative to say about them. So I just wanted to put that out there about the price differential. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Are there any other questions?
Just to put it in, I mean, it's a dollar eighty-seven more for the three years. I mean, that's the, that's what Rumpke would be over what local waste services. So they're all, their, their local waste and Rumpke is both going to go up. But it's a dollar eighty-seven difference from Rumpke to local waste. So $2 a month, $24 a year, thereabouts is, is what the difference between Rumpke to local waste would be for the first three years.
Okay. Because I was just bringing that up because I know we had a debate over what the City of Columbus water in the 3% and talk about helping families. You know, it's a pandemic, try to save the money, which we did. We was able to cut a percent off. So if we want to continue in that spirit of things, I just want to let everybody know the difference in price between what Rumpke and local waste was going to be of the longevity of this contract. So.
Any other questions? I move we amend this ordinance to council for a second reading. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Packerell. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry. I apologize for chiming in. We're not amending it, right? We're just moving it on for a second reading.
Okay.
So I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. I move that we send this ordinance to council for a second reading. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Packerell. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a second reading. Item number two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rumpke Trash and Recycling for recycling processing generated by residential units, municipal facilities, and various special events in the City of Reynoldsburg. Are there any questions regarding this legislation?
I've had a lot of experience with trash. What this is, is even though local will be our primary refuge hauler, they still have to, when they pick up the recycling, they have to take it to Rumpke. That, it's the only processing facility here in central Ohio. So local will have to pay Rumpke per ton for every ton they take to the recycling center. So we're making a contract with Rumpke for, for, to take that recycling materials to their facilities. And I believe it was at a cost, it was 50 cents?
Fifty cents, yeah.
Fifty cents. Now, that will be in addition to what residents are paying for local. So it would be 50 cents more per month. But that's a per tonnage fee to pay for recycling. Does that make sense to everyone? It was buried previously currently because Rumpke is both your regular waste service and taking care of the recycling. But it has to be separated out this time since you have a separate trash hauler.
So the 50 cents is not included with the $20 and whatever cents?
$20 and 47 cents, I believe it was.
Yeah, the local waste bid was $20.47.
So it will be $20.97 per month total. I'm not sure how that will show on the bill, whether they will show those two items as separate, which I hope they do. But yes, that's what this whole contract ordinance is for.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Comments? Yes, Councilmember Packerell.
So basically, that means with the local, we are paying extra. What is the difference between contract, the Rumpke and the waste when we add 50 cents there?
The difference is that when local picks up the recycling, which they will, they will do, they have to haul that recycling to Rumpke's processing center. So somebody has to pay Rumpke for taking all of those recyclable materials.
No, my, my question is, we have two different, let's say, Rumpke has one price and local had other price. So what we heard before, that certain price for the local, I didn't write that number here in front of me right now. When we add this 50 cents, the actual difference is not much with the Rumpke and the local, right?
Correct. It, it reduces the difference in Rumpke's bid price. Correct.
It's a dollar 30.
Yeah, the, just to, just to clarify, the, so Rumpke submitted two bids, one for processing and one for pickup. The processing bid is the only bid that we received for processing. So we don't, we didn't have any other option to present that to you. It would be 50 cents whether we go with local waste or whether we went with Rumpke. It would be an additional 50 cents.
Okay. So, okay, that makes more sense because I was wondering, with Rumpke, was that all included or was that separate? It sounded like it was going to be separate.
It's a separate bid.
Okay. So it didn't matter one way or another. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All right. I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Lawson-Roe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. Item number three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Coven Gravel Company Incorporated for the demolish of the property located at 7332 East Main Street, Happy Dragon, appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. This legislation is backed before the committee for any further possible discussion. It's, Mayor, would you like to speak on this thing?
Yeah, I can answer any additional questions if anyone has anything. Nothing has changed from the last time that you looked at this.
Any questions from the committee?
I do.
Yes.
Just, thank you. We had talked about this quite a bit, that the developer would pay for the cost of demolition. And then it was discussed it was going to be put into the project and that they would only pay 70% at most of this. But then in reading the developer agreement, it says prior to this contract, the city is going to pay for the entire expense. So the city is now paying for all of the demolition on Happy Dragon 100%. And that's not getting factored into the developer to cover.
No, no. In fact, that was actually part of the negotiation with the developers, that we wanted to include the demolition costs within what we call project costs in the development agreement, costs that we need to be reimbursed for. They did not want to include demolition costs. We did. And demolition costs are included within what we define as project costs.
Okay. So then when we get to the developer agreement later, we can amend this because it says, again, we are paying at our sole cost for demolition.
So we are, we are paying the, we would be paying for demolition before we've even entered into an agreement to transfer the property. At the time and point in which we get to a purchase and sale agreement with the developer, which is not what the development agreement tonight is at all, we have set the minimum price for transfer at 70% of project cost, which includes the demolition cost. So we do have to take on the demolition cost upfront as part of this ordinance. Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess when we get to that point, we'll see it itemized and make sure it's in there. But just reading what the developer's agreement says, so I wanted to make sure then we're specific on that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments from council? I move we forward this ordinance to council for a second reading and an emergency approval. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Lawson-Roe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a second reading and emergency approval. Item number four, an ordinance to create Chapter 176 Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion into the codified ordinance of the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. This ordinance is being brought before the committee as a work session. Attorney Shook?
Thank you, Councilmember Strickland. As this council may recall, on the second meeting in June, council passed a resolution directing the city administration to draft an ordinance of this nature to present to you for a work session within 90 days. We felt it best to go ahead and submit this ordinance to you before your August break. That way, if there are significant changes that need to be made, we have an entire month to continue to work with whichever council member reaches out to request those changes. The highlight, I would say, of this particular ordinance is the creation of a diversity, equity, and inclusion officer. As we have seen, I think, in other cities like Bexley and Westerville, they have created that position, but they didn't give that position a lot of guidance on what their responsibilities would be. This ordinance gives a significant amount of guidance. And in addition, it places some requirements on our bidding contractors to increase their outreach with women and minority-owned businesses and subcontractors. And it places an additional burden on our departments to be more proactive with their outreach for women and minority-owned businesses as vendors. And it gives our diversity and inclusion officer a significant amount of discretion to be able to create guidelines that will help to direct our departments and our bidding contractors going forward to ensure that our outreach is going out to those businesses and that we are improving our contracting with those businesses.
Thank you, Attorney Shook. Are there any questions from the committee? Any, I'm sorry, didn't see your hand down there.
I'll jump in and start. Thank you, Attorney Shook. Can I, can I start asking where, I mean, I know you, you are big about not reinventing the wheel. So where did you start the core of this? What, what city, community did we kind of start as a base? Or, or is that something you crafted on your own?
So, you know, I'm, I love to pat myself on the back and say, I drafted this from scratch, right?
That's okay.
It would have taken me until September, October to do that. So I looked at all of the communities that I could find in the state of Ohio that had similar ordinances. Interestingly, Springfield, which isn't a city much larger than Reynoldsburg, was the first city in the state of Ohio I could find that had passed an ordinance of this nature. And it was actually in the early 1990s. So the first thing I did was I started to look at their ordinance, some of the things that they had included, but also taking into account that that ordinance is now about 30 years old. And so things have changed over time. We also looked at the city of Canton, city of Toledo, and of course, the city of Columbus. But we also took into account with a lot of those cities, they're larger cities, they have much more significant manpower in terms of employment to be able to administer that program. As you are all aware, we have basically a skeletal staff here at City Hall. We have all the attorney, or the employees that we need, which isn't very many here inside City Hall. So we had to take into account, you know, our financial ability to be able to bring in someone who might be able to administer this program without putting any more burden on those department directors who are already pretty well stretched in with their time. So we were left with the conclusion that the only way to do this and to do it right would be to create a new position and to give that position responsibilities of this nature.
And do the cities you mentioned, all of them, have that individual officer that works within their, a paid- And do the cities you mentioned, all of them, have that individual officer that works within there, a paid?
So the city of Springfield does. The city of Columbus has an entire department that is dedicated to this. We were not going to create a department. Our officer would be more of, as we talked about earlier, kind of an ombudsman. You know, someone who is working with our department directors to ensure that this ordinance is being implemented properly.
And so with a vision of this for that officer also would be a full-time position?
I believe so. And I think in the conversations I've had with Mayor Begany and also with Chair Strickland, I think that was the intent.
So paid position, full benefits, full everything expense. Is there, is there any agency that could be third-party contracted with something like this? I mean, does it, someone that has that bit of an HR knowledge, someone that can help? You know, if council sets the rules and directs this is what we want to see? Are there options along that way?
Not really. I mean, the state obviously has a process through the Department of Administrative Services whereby they are able to certify minority and women-owned businesses in the state. And of course, as we talked about when council passed the resolution, we have a number of those kinds of businesses already certified in the city of Reynoldsburg. But we also wanted to be able to, we wanted to be able to rely on that certification process because if they've already gone through that with the state, then why would we make them go through a different certification process with the city? So the ordinance does allow for reciprocity for any of those businesses that are already certified. But we also wanted our own internal process for any business that didn't want to go through the state that could go through the city. And so we put in those requirements for how you get certified and we give that power and responsibility to the DEI officer.
So I'm glad you mentioned that because I know there's a process through the state, so we can use that. But then if they don't want to go through the same, ours would be a little more streamlined? It's probably the better way to say it?
Streamlined and local. Yeah, I think it's probably a little bit easier. Anybody who's worked with the state knows that there's just a significant amount of bureaucracy there. And, you know, here you would have one person who you're communicating with.
Okay. And then I think the way that, again, I read that it's written a new chapter, that position is a individual position that's, in which department? Under the mayor's office, report accountable to council? Where are they following in line of their direction?
So it's kind of a combination, you know? And again, this is really up to council, but, you know, what I presented to council is that this person would be appointed through a selection committee. That consists of the mayor, the human resources director, the chair of the Public Service and Transportation Committee and council president. And so they would select this person with the approval of council. The DEI officer would report directly to the mayor, but they would have reporting requirements to council as well. And they would not fall under any one department director, essentially because they are going to be acting as more of an oversight officer for those department directors.
Okay, so again, it would be a bit almost of council hiring directly as well because we would have to vote on and approve the individual. So it's quite different than any other, any other staff member that we would have is that they would be directly then requiring council approval.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I didn't think, again, no offense to you, I didn't think it was all from your straight brain power that quickly, but I think it's a great start and I think it's good information to try to find a best way forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Mayor, would you like to say something?
Yeah, just to kind of give a couple of comments about why this position would be needed specifically at the local level as opposed to the state. I'm going to give a shout out to one of my interns this summer, Drew Lohnerberger, who has done a fabulous job of going through all of the vendors that the city of Reynoldsburg has used over the last two years. And what he has found is the state of Ohio has one of those that is certified. That would be Star Consultants. They're the ones that are doing the work on the evaluation of our parks and rec and water building facilities. However, what he found is that we have 12 other vendors, at least so far, that he has found that are women or minority-owned businesses that have not gone through the certification process. And so we're trying to match up all of those things. So even though the state of Ohio has that, maybe it's something to the point where it's not something that's reaching down to a lot of the communities or like a city attorney shook had mentioned, maybe the process is a little bit more of a hoop to jump through than anything else. But at the local level, at our level, it's something that we want to make sure that we have an eye on so we can partake. I mean, a perfect example would be Starstruck. That is one of those that is not registered with the state of Ohio, but obviously it is a minority-owned business that we do work with extensively.
Thank you, mayor. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Any from council? Yes, Councilmember Baker.
I just want to make a statement about this because I think this is something that the city of Reynoldsburg can benefit from. Seeing how one, one business, one minority-owned business, to our knowledge, has done business with the city of Reynoldsburg. Am I correct?
As of this moment, yes. We're still, it's, it's a long list.
Yeah, but the fact that you have to reach back so far to find a business, a minority-owned business or a woman business that does business with the city of Reynoldsburg, it's sad. I'm just going to say it right now. It's sad and pathetic, especially in this, what, the city was founded in, what, 1838? I mean, that's ridiculous. So I full-heartedly support this legislation and I hope it does live up to, you know, what we're going to make it to be because we have to invest in ourselves. And that's just, you know, not just investing with money, but investing with character and content and opportunity. You know, our motto is the city of respect. Let's not just say it, let's do it. Let's be, let's actually be it. And this is a step in the right direction to make that happen. So I support this. I want to know on the record that I support this and I do hope when the time come, it's unanimous, not just six to one, five to two, or barely passing the bar, that this is unanimously passed. And so we could show not just our residents, but show everybody in Franklin County and the state that we are inclusive and actually have something to back it up. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Any other questions? Yes, President.
When I worked for the state of Ohio and using vendors, we had to put forth an effort to utilize minorities and women. And so I'm familiar with that process. And at the end of every year, we used to have to, through the purchasing department, they would make sure that we were in compliance with doing that. So it is rather important to do that and consider minority and women businesses. So I applaud Reynoldsburg in looking at this because it is very important.
Thank you, Madam President. Attorney Shug, thank you so much for working on this ordinance. And again, it really tells us about who we are and where we're going as Reynoldsburg. We have to be able to be inclusive with everything that we do, from a city, school perspective, everything. As Councilmember Baker stated before, since 1800s, right? And we only dealing with one minority business. So I will do everything that I can to make sure that we are going after these women and minority businesses to make sure that they know it's a place here for them. It's important. So again, thank you. I know we probably started this whole process, Stacy and I, last year, starting the conversation. But I'm glad we are moving in the right direction. So thank you. There anything else? All right. This legislation will be brought back to council at our September 13th meeting. I'd like to close the work session. As there is no further business for a public service and transportation committee, I return this meeting back to you, President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next, we have our report from Finance and Administration Committee, Councilmember Sabadi.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for July 26, 2021. Members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Strickland, myself and President Jenkins. First item on the agenda for tonight is an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a developer's agreement with Trivium Development LLC for the purpose of future sale and redevelopment of real estate and declaring an emergency. This legislation is back before the committee to allow for some further discussion if necessary. I will ask if there are any questions from the committee, any further questions in the committee on this item.
Mayor, can you give us a little more information regarding this particular ordinance?
Yeah, this is basically the, an agreement to set the parameters for what ultimately the development will look like. So there's clauses in there that talk about the square footage, the potential for how these facilities would be used, the parking aspects, things of that nature. It's not a sale agreement. It is not a purchase. And the 70% is the minimum, not the maximum, as far as a potential return. We bring this to you as an emergency with hopes that by the time that August is through and September comes around, we'll be able to bring you an actual purchase agreement with identifiable vendors, tenants that will be in this particular location.
Thank you, mayor.
Any questions from the full council?
Just comment again, you know, making sure we do get a list then of this project so we know. I mean, Auditor Sisak, I assume your office would be tracking the, be able to show us the project costs on this of what all it looks like so we are able to see demolition costs and anything else involved with this? The EPA studies and everything that we are going to be dealing with? Is that coming through your office?
Yeah, I can monitor and do. Economic development project.
Okay.
Passed out best practices for economic development. None of you have received my office, our documents. Something that we should all have before we approve document is just documents I've asked for and would have received. Where we move forward, I think we should look.
Are those documents typically given for development deals or purchase agreements? Auditor Sisak? I'll defer. I'm unfamiliar with it. I know that obviously. For purchase agreement, yes. That's.
For the development agreement.
This is not something that you would typically ask for in a developer's agreement. You are agreeing to enter into a contractual obligation to move through the process so that development could continue. You don't necessarily go after financials. And I'm not really even sure what the auditor would even ask for or what they would want to see. It's something that you don't typically do. I don't think that we looked at financial statements from every single business that we operate on. They're the ones that's putting a lot of the risk on themselves. So they decide to purchase said building and then get a development out of it. It still is a free country, I'm aware of. So I, it's not sure that it's a best practice and I don't think that I had read it in that statement that was handed out. In fact, we, we pretty much followed it almost to a T if you went through it. And I believe I had mentioned that last time when I was up here discussing that.
So yeah, this, this document obviously still doesn't even bind them to purchasing the property.
Absolutely.
So this is, it binds us a little bit to them.
Correct.
To say, as long as they do what they're supposed to, we will sell said property to them.
Correct. It gives the city teeth.
I see the wheels on Attorney Shug's. I don't mean to interrupt him, Director Pasher, but even as I was talking, I saw Attorney Shug almost eager to get something. Can we clarify maybe whatever is on your mind?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that's generally correct. It might be a bit of an oversimplification. They still have to submit a development, development plan to the city that meets our approval. Essentially, the purpose of this development agreement from the city's perspective is to induce the developer to take on those costs and expenses, reaching out to potential tenants for a commercial development there, to take on the cost of paying engineers and architects for designs to submit to the city. Expenses and costs, they probably wouldn't otherwise take on if they didn't have at least a little bit of protection here in the developer's agreement.
Of course.
But it's minimal protection. We've been very careful with the language to ensure that, you know, the city is at least protected from a financial perspective and to give us maximum discretion on what that development plan could or should be.
And I think that's an interesting part because this is still pretty vague of a document. And I think that's intentional.
It is.
To, again, my concern all along has been overpayment of the property and removal of public parking. Those are probably my biggest concerns. You and I have talked about this for a long time with the hope of seeing some progress. So I think it's a great concept. I think seeing some development there, I'm all for. I just, I think, again, the process, the price, those were a few of my concerns, that I want to make sure the taxpayers are, I know we're not making whole, but can recoup as much as possible that we've paid out. And I think that, again, this is intentionally vague to help Trivium move forward. I can, I can get that. As long as then we see that developer's agreement that, as you stated at the other, other meeting two weeks ago, it will be very clear, public parking is required. It will be very clear what their obligations are to keep that open. I think that's, those are some very important facts.
And I think you will see a lot more of those ambiguities become concrete, become clear. Because I believe our intention on any purchase and sale agreement with this particular property is to incorporate the development plan that we've agreed to with the developer and that they need to develop this site in accordance with that plan and to protect the city so that if they do not, we have a reversionary right to that real estate.
Yeah, so the next time that you will see something for this specific site, and it will actually be going to planning commission. And just based on preliminary conversations, it would be early fall.
So they've already got something prepared for planning commission?
Correct. And so it would be there. We would memorialize that at planning commission. That would be pushed as part of the purchase and sale contract, which would then come back to you to finalize. They're hoping to get and start construction still yet this year.
Are there, you mentioned fees that they're going to be dealing with, engineering, architectural. Are they going to include that into here and try to get us to eat some of those costs?
No, a lot of that is all on them. In fact, they actually have already spent quite a bit of that already. They certainly, there's a provision, if that's what City Attorney Shug was questioning, eye-browing. If we decide, and I don't think this is going to necessarily be on this specific parcel, but potentially on the next parcel, and I'll get to that in a second, there is sort of an out clause that says, okay, if they have worked through a certain agreement or they have not met certain milestones, that we'd like to see them meet said planning commission documents and those of nature. They've spent considerable amount of dollars. They need to be able to recuperate that if we decide to break ties and move on and go a different direction with a different developer. And that is in there at 50,000, I believe.
No, that is not in this contract. In fact, we have no out provision at all in terms of monetary compensation. So, and again, that was to the city's benefit. We didn't want to have to pay to leave this contract.
We'll discuss.
Okay. And that's what you wanted to clarify there too, right? As you were looking and, okay, thank you. I guess then my, my only last question, and I apologize there, the Auditor Sisak, there was some, what's, I guess, I'm not sure what the concern, can you elaborate more? And Mr. Pasher, you didn't think that that was ever common to see financials, but?
He wants to see his tax returns and financial documents. It's just not necessary for this stage in the process or really ever when we're selling said parcels. If we were partnering with said developer and we were entering into a contractual obligation, like say we did with the YMCA, and we wanted to take a look and make sure that they were going to be bringing said finances to the document and ensure that they were going to be able to accurately do what they said, then yes, we would take a look at that. But they're already entering into the contract and saying that they could do said this because we're holding them that, to that as well as selling the property. We're not putting up dollars and instituting into an investment deal with them to build said property with them. So we wouldn't be looking at their financial documents as if we were a bank. with them. So we wouldn't be looking at their financial documents as if we were a banker of some sort. So it, it's a wash because it's not, you're comparing apples to oranges on this project.
Okay. But I mean, if we're entering into an agreement with them, I mean, wouldn't we want, doesn't that make sense for our auditor to ask that question at all, or?
I guess clarification of exactly what he is looking for specifically, and maybe just making that request to Trivium specifically if he is the one that is in fact looking for said documents.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure. So that's, I guess, maybe why I wanted to clarify with the auditor. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I don't know the answer. So what's the, this, I don't know, concern or comment?
Councilman Cotner, in April, when we had our first meeting, we had legal counsel there, and I presented documents that show the best practices for economic development from my angle, from the, from public finance. We have $3 million that we were laying out here for two properties, plus demolition costs, plus other costs that we are eating now, or we're including for environmental studies. We would want to know basic financial documents. I don't want the person's personal IRS returns, but we don't even have an annual report, and this is something that I've asked for in April, and I've asked for it repeatedly.
Okay. I mean, I've looked at Trivium's website. I don't see any financials on there either. I don't know that that's, I don't know the answer. I mean, I guess if they're willing to enter into the, oh, you're right, you say, we're not the banker, they're not paying us back a loan, and we certainly could walk away, as City Attorney Shook shared, we certainly have outs if they can't pay. So I, I mean, I can understand the concern though. I mean, again, the city auditor is, his job is to be accountable to the city finances, so I understand the questioning at least. Maybe I'm off base too, but I, I don't know. I, the question at least makes sense. Whether we had it or not, I guess I'm not worried about, but I can, I can understand the line of questioning, I think. So that's what I just wanted to try to clarify what we were, what we were looking at and why the seemingly disagreement on that. I was trying to make sure we were there. Attorney Shook, yes?
Yeah, I think it's probably, it's probably a fair question in terms of the developer's ability to be able to build what they say they're going to build. And I feel like we're going to have that protection in there in the, in the purchase and sale agreement. So we are going to work to make sure that, you know, the developer does have the financial capability of doing what they say they're going to do. Whether that means that we request, you know, detailed financial records or otherwise, that is certainly something that's going to be taken into account when we get to that stage, which we're not there yet.
Okay. Okay, so that sounds like a little bit of middle common ground here, which seems reasonable then. And so we're not to that stage yet. When do you feel that stage would be?
It's probably a better question for Director Boucher. It sounds like we're probably, we're advanced than I thought we were.
Okay, I, okay. Mr. Director Boucher, is that a question that?
I would say what we're looking for, what is a fair statement is, is that we are looking for something from the bank that they're actually going to be able to secure said purchase contract when we get to that phase on, on this next, when it comes back to city council for that purchase contract. We'll have within the documentation that says that Bank A is securing said loan to purchase said contracts, and we know that we're securing that. You allow them to dive into the financial statements from them. If they're saying that that's good, if they're going with Heartland, which they may well be, then that should be good enough for the city. After that, they've already said what they're going to do. It's already been ordained at that point, and it's already been memorialized at Planning Commission that they're there to build that, and they have a timeframe to get that done.
Okay. Again, I think it seems like a reasonable question for entering into agreement with somebody. So I can understand what the auditor's saying, and I, I get where you're, where we are then. So it seems like a reasonable kind of middle ground then. The last thing that I had in my notes of, of a little concern is if we're entering into agreement and we're at some point selling to this corporation, the CIC that we have with Mr. Spencer involved on our CIC, is that an appropriate relationship still? Is, are we as a city able to still move forward in that type of agreement with him sitting in that office of a, of a member of that board?
Yeah, so a, as a member of the board, he's, he, so as we've talked about with the CIC, we have our public members, and then we have our private members. And forty, at least 40% of the CIC board has to be our public members. So Mayor Begany, Councilman Cotner, Councilman Baker comprise our public members. Then we have our private members, and they are technically governmental officials subject to Ohio ethics laws. But he would not be able to vote as a member of the board on anything that presents a conflict of interest for him. He would have to recuse. This right now is not going through the CIC.
Right.
So it won't be an issue on this matter, but certainly you could see where there might be issues that come up in the future.
Okay. I just wanted to address it and make sure we talked it on the record.
And I think that goes with a lot of the, the individuals that we have that are serving on the board because they're obviously are an active community of different developers or property owners and things of that nature. So we know that that's going to come up from time to time with various members that are on there.
This one seems a little, a little further and a little bigger, so that's why I wanted to make sure it was addressed. So I think it's, again, just, I appreciate the response and the clarification on it. Thank you. Okay, I'm done.
Councilmember Strickland, you still have a question?
Thank you. So Director Boucher, and, and again, it sounds like the auditor is very concerned, right, regarding seeing Trivium financials. Have we did that before in this particular stage with any developer, developers that we have worked with?
No.
Okay.
We've never worked with anyone like this, though.
Right. Yeah.
No, I mean, it's still a valid question to ask, have we ever did this before with any project?
To be clear, I guess, to, to your point, you know, we obviously sold the property to the brewery. We did not do anything of that nature to them, and we certainly didn't, you know, enter into contract when we were going through the community center. We didn't have Ohio Health show financial statements that they could afford the lease that they were leasing from there. So there's been occasions where we've done somewhat similar deals, and no, we've not asked for those.
Councilmember Baker?
Well, Councilwoman Strickland basically answered the question, or asked the question that I was gonna ask, but I have nothing.
Okay.
One more question, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
One more question here. And so I know Councilmember Cotner brought it up regarding Mr. Spencer, I believe, sitting on the CIC board. That's like any other person, as you stated before, that do business, own businesses, that sits on a particular board that may impact them where they have to recuse themselves of a vote. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that a little bit better.
I mean, just, just to kind of clarify on that, it's, it's a little bit different because it's the CIC board. So if it were city councils, so we could not, and we could not do business with any one of you, okay, not, not like this. That would be, that would be a conflict of interest. That would be a criminal violation on the part of the member of city council. So this is a little bit different because he's a private member, and he's a member of a CIC, which is kind of a unique creation in, in Ohio, but it's not the same as the city council.
Trying to give Councilmember Baker time, I think.
Well, I guess I could ask this question. What is the reason for bringing this up now? You know, the city's done business years bef, you know, business years before with other businesses and all that kind of stuff. Why, it just seemed like now there's some sort of urgency or some sort of issue. I just trying to figure out the background. Why is this all of a sudden become an issue? Asking, I'm talking, sorry, this is more towards Auditor Sisak because I was reading your handout that you gave out. Like, what's the, just, you know, reason, if we, you know, this has never been brought up before. So why all of a sudden now it's popping up?
Chairman Salvati, Councilman Baker. The brewery that we, we sold was $100,000. The Ohio Health Development, their annual statement and reports are all available online. So I was able to read those. This is $3 million that we're dealing with, with a company that we're, we've used taxpayer dollars to purchase, to do economic development, and these are directives that come from the Government Finance Officers Association. I did not make them up. These are best practices that have been in practice for a long time, and I passed them on and asked for these basic documents. If you don't want to see them before you make this decision, that's on you. But I'm, it's my duty to advise you to do so, and that's what I'm doing for every member on council.
Okay. Only reason why I asked that question because the why was being brought up, and everybody knows the issue that happened with the why. We were over budget. We were forever told it was on time, on budget, and to come to find out, there was all kinds of calamities going on. We was over budget, stuff was taken out that we had, council had no knowledge of being taken out. And so that was the reason why I asked that question because there was no, let's see the paperwork then, but all of a sudden now. See, get, see where I'm getting at? It's, it's just, that's why I was just wondering, why wasn't something like this in place right after that happened?
You're comparing the YMCA changes to economic development here? Is that what you're getting to?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the money. I'm basically comparing, you, you talk, you said about the Eastside Brewery, that was 100,000. You was talking about, we're talking about $3 million here. That, with all the extra changes, that's a $35 million building. That was $35 million that we showed out. So it shouldn't be no difference whether it's $1 or $100 million. I'm just saying that this all of a sudden now came out, I would have liked for something like this come out right after what happened with the why. But all I got at that time was just finger pointing. So that's the reason why I just asked that. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from, seeing none, I will move to forward the, this ordinance to council for its second reading and emergency approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Strickland. Any last discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for its second reading and emergency approval. As there's no further business with the Finance Administration Committee, I return the committee, the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Item 12 on the agenda, which is a consent agenda for emergency adoption. Items 12A through E are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for emergency adoption. Unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion, council will move forward to vote and approve these ordinances. Would the clerk please read Items 12A through E?
A, an ordinance declaring the improvement of real, certain real property located in the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating public improvements to be made that will benefit such property, requiring, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, and establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, and authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing agreement and declaring an emergency. B, an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 01-2021 to approve the Phase 1 final plat for the Spring Hill Farm Development Phase 1 and declaring an emergency. C, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Colvin Gravel Company, Inc., for the demolition of the property located at 7332 East Main Street, Happy Dragon, appropriating funds, and declaring an emergency. D, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Modern Office Methods for the clerk of court, copiers, waive competitive bidding, and declaring an emergency. E, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a development agreement with Trivium Development LLC for the purpose of future sale and redevelopment of real estate and declaring an emergency. May I have a motion to approve these ordinances?
Councilmember Baker may have a second.
Second.
Councilmember Salvati. Would the clerk please call the row?
Councilmember Salvati?
Aye.
Councilmember Pecaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Madam President, that was 6-0.
You forgot me.
I'm sorry. Oh, Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Okay, that, Madam President, that is 6-0.
These ordinances are approved with six affirmative votes and no negative votes. Next, we have on the agenda, Item 13, consent agenda for first reading. Items 13A through C are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a first reading for these ordinances. Would the clerk please read Items 13A through C?
A, an ordinance accepting, approving, and ratifying the submitted recommendations of several city of Reynoldsburg tax incentive review councils. B, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg. C, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rumkey Trash and Recycling for recycling, recycling processing generated by residential units, municipal facilities, and various special events in the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio.
These ordinances stand for a first reading. Item 14 on the agenda is a consent agenda for a second reading. Items 14A through B are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a second reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a second reading of these ordinances. Would the clerk please read Items 14A and B?
Item A, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list of the police department. B, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Local Waste Services LTD to be the sole provider of solid waste, recyclable materials, and yard waste collection services for waste generated by residential units, municipal facilities, and various special events in the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio.
These ordinances stand for a second reading. Item 15, consent agenda for a third reading. Items 15A through H are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a third reading and approval unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a vote on these ordinances.
Madam President, we will remove Item A, the planning and zoning.
Thank you.
Amendment.
So would the clerk please read items, we're removing A, so it will be Items B through H?
Item B, an ordinance establishing Chapter 785 medical marijuana facilities of the codified ordinances for the city of Reynoldsburg. C, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list of the police department. D, an ordinance to amend Section 1399.05 exemptions to the vacant property registration of the codified ordinances for the city of Reynoldsburg. E, an ordinance authorizing EMH&amp;T to conduct survey, design, engineering, and bidding services for the police department, west parking lot, and appropriating funds therefore. F, an ordinance authorizing EMH&amp;T to conduct survey, design, engineering, and bidding services for a traffic signal interconnect and preemptive system along the Main Street corridor. G, an ordinance authorizing EMH&amp;T to conduct survey, design, engineering, and building services for the Graham Road Multi-Use Trail sidewalk extension, Palmer Road to Livingston Avenue project, and appropriating funds therefore. And H, an ordinance authorizing EMH&amp;T to conduct survey, design, engineering, and bidding services for the Hill Road Methodist Cemetery improvements and appropriating funds therefore.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances? Councilmember Baker may have a second.
Second.
Councilmember Strickland. Would the clerk please call the row?
Councilmember Salvati?
Aye.
Councilmember Pecaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
And Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Madam President, that was 6-0.
These ordinances are approved with six affirmative votes and no negative votes. Next, we have on the agenda is other council matters. Does anyone on?
Madam President, we have to go back to take care of Item 15A, the planning and zoning update.
Consent agenda for the third reading?
Yes, this will be just a third reading, and council is, if anyone on council wishes to amend this ordinance, I'll go ahead and read it. An ordinance to amend Chapter 11 Planning and Zoning Code for the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio. So if anyone on council would like to amend that ordinance? would like to amend that ordinance, please make your motion to amend.
I make the motion to amend. We need to clarify what the amendment will be.
You need to state exactly what you're amending.
Yeah. I'll go ahead and, if I understand your amendment, Councilmember Packerel, you are seeking to amend the planning and zoning code to change the map, different from the recommendation of Planning Commission, so that the property commonly known as 8300 East Main Street will be rezoned from the inside district to the suburban residential district. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. That is the motion on the floor. I'll second.
Second.
Who, was that you, Councilmember Cotner?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Savadi?
This is on the amendment, right?
This is to approve the amendment only. You will then vote on the ordinance.
Aye.
Councilmember Packerel?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
And Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that vote was 6-0 to amend the ordinance. Now council must seek a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Thank you, motion approved.
So we have, need a motion to approve the change to the map? Is that correct?
No, you just need a motion to approve the zoning changes as a whole with.
A motion to approve the changes for the?
And I believe Councilman Cotner already moved for that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Councilman Cotner just moved for that.
Say that again.
Councilman Cotner just made the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Packerel? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember Packerel?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
And Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Madam President, that was 6-0.
Seven affirmative votes and no negative.
Six.
Six. I'm sorry, I forgot. Six affirmative votes and no negative votes. Next, we have other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items that they would like to discuss this evening? Next, we have upcoming meetings. There is a scheduled upcoming BZBA and Planning Commission meeting. Council's next meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 13, 2021, at 6:30. Council is in recess for the month of August. If there's no other further, I'm sorry, Councilmember Baker?
I just want to, my tradition, thank you to all the service men and women, the nurses, the doctors, those who work in retail, those who work in the logistic, logistics, sorry. And I just want to say, Councilwoman Lawson Rowe, that event that you put on, it was very awesome. My kids had a good time. That's all I got to say.
Councilmember Packerel?
Yeah, I was thinking to tell not to, but I think it's important, important I tell this thing here today, not, I had a, my, last two weeks ago, my uncle died. And so I'm bringing this thing for a reason, because I think it's important for education purposes. You might have seen my, cut my hair. You might be seeing people moving around in this community when somebody dies in the family. According to our tradition, we save our head for if they're dad or uncle and that nature. So that is the reason I saved my hair. And if you see anything happen, there's, according to our tradition, that after the death of the family member, there will be rituals for 13 days. There were a lot of traffic and things will be happening around. So that's why I want to bring this up here, because that people will die, things happens. So same thing was happening in the neighborhood where my uncle was living. We informed the residents, we give them a letter, and they also called me, and I was watching if something happens, that people were, and just to make sure that when things happen, these things will be, people will be saving their head. Nothing weird, but that is our tradition that we do, that's how we mourn for the person who died. So just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
In condolences to you and your family.
Send my condolences also.
If there's no other further business, this meeting will be adjourned. The time is now 8:57. Have a good evening.